Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee meeting of Tuesday, May 23, 2017. We'll call this meeting back into order and begin with the reading of the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. And with that, we will see if, we will go into public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into our student advisory council.
Good evening. So first off, we'd like to congratulate the boys lacrosse team on having an undefeated season and going 18-0, earning the middle, making the Middle Sex League champions and the playoffs will begin next week. The girls track and field team also went undefeated to win the Middle Sex League, completing a triple crown for this year. The boys and girls track teams have multiple athletes headed into the state meet and even runners going to the nationals meet in North Carolina at the end of June. Senior finals begin this week. It's a busy week for, upcoming week for the seniors. They have, we have awards night on Thursday night, senior night on Tuesday, May 30 at 3:00. Senior prom is Wednesday, May 31st, and the grand march at the Upper Common begins at 5:30. And graduation is Saturday, June 3rd in the fieldhouse at 10 o'clock.
Anything from the committee?
Thanks for your update.
Thank you very much.
Busy, busy.
Thanks. Okay, we will go now into consent agenda and we have a motion.
Move the school committee approve the minutes of May 9 and accept the minutes of the April 7 School Committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting as presented.
Motion to be made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
No, Mr. Chairman. I had a, I had a question.
Sure.
Sorry about that. On the meeting minutes, and I believe it was just a, just a typo under the CU collaborative report, budget item 7F, the membership fee, I believe is $5,500 a year, not $5,500 a year. I think it's just a typo, meaning decimal point.
Should we confide me? I have the backup here. Maybe we're just getting a great deal.
We could be getting a great deal.
It's not $5,500 every time.
See, the $5,000 or $5,500. What we, what we could do if, Mr. Chair, if the committee were up for it, is just allow the committee to place the correct number in there.
Sure.
We could trust that that would occur.
So moved.
Accept the amendment to find the number and place it correctly.
$5,000. Membership fee assessments, $5,5,000, and there must be 10 member districts, so it's $5,500 each.
Yes, of course.
Other 10, 10 member districts.
There's 10 member districts.
Okay, so it's $5,5,000 is in their budget, so divided by the 10 member districts will be $5,500 for Wakefield's portion.
Okay, so with that, is there, is there a motion for an amendment to change $5,500 to $550?
No.
No.
$5,500.
Those zeros keep getting you.
Okay, so Greg had made that motion. Does it have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion there? All in favor? Great.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the draft joint legislative statement with the Melrose School Committee, and I will actually go to Mr. Liakos for a few words on this.
Okay, thank you, Rob, and thanks for including him on the agenda. So if you'll recall, we had a joint meeting with the Melrose School Committee on April 5th at Melrose High School in which we discussed a range of state legislative issues that, that impact public education in Wakefield and Melrose with Senator Jason Lewis, Representative Donald Wong, and Representative Paul Broder. And one of the things that we hoped would come out of it would be a sort of a joint statement of interest to the state legislators on issues surrounding the state budget and funding for public education, funding issues around special education, and charter school reimbursements. So that's, that's the genesis of the draft letter, and so bring that forward to you tonight for your consideration.
So do we want to start with a motion?
We do. I move the school committee approve the joint legislative statement with the Melrose School Committee as presented.
Second. Okay, motion's made and seconded. Discussion questions? Seeing none, Mr. Martin.
I would just say that I want to thank Mr. Liakos, I know this began when he was, was chair of the committee, and it's nice to see that we've been able to follow up with this. I wholeheartedly support the issue before it, and hopefully more and more school committees will be issuing statements like this, especially some of the, some of the issues around, around the, out of foundation budget. I think that is, is a greater among equals, so thank you for following up.
And just one other, one other note, the Senate is, the state senate is, is working on the FY '18 budget as we speak, and Senator Lewis has co-sponsored a very extensive amendment to the senate budget that I think addresses almost all of the issues in the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendation, at least for this year, and the Mass Association of School Committees is urging us to support that amendment too. So just a note, this sort of up-to-date context for these issues.
Thank you. Yeah, Chris, please.
I don't have all the information. I was hoping maybe somebody else would. Because I thought I read today that there was something going on with the foundation budget at the state house that had been voted on like this afternoon.
That's, that's it.
So we've missed it, in a way.
I don't think it was, wasn't voted on, it's probably, actually, they're probably debating it tonight, but it's, but that's just one amendment in the ongoing process.
It's just the amendment, isn't it?
Yeah, just the amendment, yeah.
You will have to go back to the House anyway.
Exactly, yeah.
Great, okay, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Chairman's comments. My only comment is that my email regarding subcommittee assignments will be going out following this meeting, so I just appreciate everybody for pliable to that. And with that, we will go to Dr. Smith's portion.
Okay, so I'd like to ask our professional learning community group to join us, maybe Principal Colin Tony, if you don't mind coming up as well. The school committee had the opportunity to observe a PLC in action, and so they did that at 7:00, and now it's really an opportunity for just a very brief presentation from this group and then hopefully some nice discussion and question to answer. Could sense more on camera, and we've got some new folks in the audience, do you mind doing just one more introduction, individual introduction?
I'm Kirsten Atwater, I teach sixth grade science. Jennifer Pierce, sixth grade science.
Liz Duzak, sixth grade science.
Jennifer Thomas, science.
I had a couple of junior middle school presidents.
So did you have anything you want to say upfront, or just, or just go open up for questions?
I think we can open up for, for questions. We presented what a PLC looks like, and we provided you with some information, typically what we do on a daily basis.
Anything from the committee? Yeah, Mr. Callahan.
It was really interesting to watch how easily you interacted. I thought that that goes to show that the, you know, the progress we've made, I'm sure that these were awkward at first, or it was hard to just keep focused and whatnot, but you really stayed on a specific task and did very well, but seemed very comfortable in doing so. But the question that came up that I think the public would do well have explained is what is the difference between a PLC and a team meeting?
We can, we are all parts of different types of PLCs, so one particular PLC that you saw today was the sixth grade science PLC. We also work together as a sixth grade, as a whole, so that could be considered a PLC as well. Typically, the difference between our PLC and our team, our PLC would be the sixth grade teacher, sixth grade science teachers across all three teams. When we get together with our team in particular, it will be the science teacher, the social studies teacher, math teacher, ELA teacher, and the special education teacher who's typically working with the same students. So we each have different groups of students because we are across different teams, but we teach the same subject, so that's a little bit different.
Yes, so the discussion's a little different. We might be discussing, today what we were doing is more of like, you know, student learning, where in our, typically in a team meeting, we would be talking more about students that particularly might be having a difficult time, upcoming meetings, schedules.
Scheduling tests, so we're not all testing on the same day, but any generally student concerns, and just updates in the calendar and so forth.
Right. We'll discuss at-risk students that we all share so we can, on our team, so we can share strategies, anything that has worked with those students to help bring them to where we would like to see them.
So the team meeting could be like, Johnny's struggling, my class is struggling, and yours too.
Right. What do we do?
What do we do? Have we been in contact?
And I think it's important to know that as a school or professional learning community, and they're part of different teams, and so depending on the format of the group of people, they're still a team and they're acting as a professional learning community. So this is a science learning community, but they might come together as math, science, and English, and social studies, be a learning community in a different format. So as a school, we are a learning, professional learning community, it just looks different in different ways.
But why, I guess what impressed me the most was that this seems to be very consistent with the school committee's policy of making sure that, you know, our kids are all on the same track.
Yes.
And we don't have one teacher doing one thing, one teacher doing another, and this can't keep you all going in the same direction and you're pulling the same train.
This gives us the ability to do that.
Yeah.
What's really neat for me is I'm in their classrooms all the time, so I'll, I'll sit in a meeting and hear them talking about this, and then see them teaching in different ways, content in different ways, and that's kind of creativity, autonomy, teaching the same thing but in different ways, which is really neat to hear them come back to the table, talk about, I did it this way, how did you do it? So I get to see kind of the global, global view of it.
Mr. Liakos.
So I, just a couple of observations. One thing I noticed, which was really exciting, is how hard you all work to get inside the minds of your students, right? So when you, when you really analyze the answers that they've given you to these questions, you are really thinking hard about how they're thinking, and so I think it's, when you see that in action, that's really inspiring, that's, that's good teaching. And then the other thing, it just brought me back to being in sixth grade, because you talk, it's so, so practical, so many of the things you talk about, like what are the objects that we can bring in that are going to resonate with these kids, is it a slinky ears, or a ball, or, you know, because, you know, science is very tactical, right? And, and that's how kids learn, so that was really fun to hear too. And then that gets to my question, which is, you know, about, because one of the things that I think you try, you're trying to do two things sometimes with kids, is you're trying to get them to observe more effectively, right, as science teachers, but you're also trying to get them to understand that their, the physical observations aren't the whole story, right? I mean, it's that, that whole sort of, you know, that, that seminal moment in scientific history when, you know, Copernicus, you know, figured out that, you know, the, the universe isn't revolving around the earth, like it looks, right? It's that same thing. So how do you guys balance that, the observation versus the conceptual at that age?
It's more of like you can't just, just say it, you have to do it.
Yeah.
And just, instead of just saying, this happens, well, let's show you how that happens. Let them make it happen, because if you're just hearing it all the time, you'll still take a, like, a big part of that away with you, but if you actually do it, then you have not only working your mind, but you're working your body, and like the muscles, and you're thinking, okay, this is how it happens, you make it happen, you're bringing that concept.
Yeah.
And then that idea, and then you can apply it in other places.
I think also allowing our students a lot of time for conversation amongst themselves, they really bring out some of those ideas, just in their conversations with their peers. And as we facilitate some of those, you know, we can ask some of those probing questions and really get them to think about what they see, what they did, how do we apply it, what does this mean?
That ha moment is the best part of science.
That's why we do it.
We win every time.
That's what you want. Okay, thank you.
James Morgan, please.
It was fun, it was really fun to see. I have just a, I have a couple of like, just specific questions. So do you ever, other than Mr. Colin Tony observing you, do you ever have the chance to observe each other? Because that would be kind of cool, like.
So we teach at the same times.
See, that's what I was thinking.
But we do go into other grade levels, which is really great. So we'll walk into eighth grade, and, you know, the curriculum moves up, so a lot of times when we're teaching something, we can go and see an astronomy lesson on something that teared up, which is really, really interesting to see, and see our old students, and, and again, the differences between three teachers teaching the same but slightly differently within their classrooms is really cool too. So we do, do go in, and then we come out and we talk about it, and give them feedback, and.
Is that, is that designed, or is that?
We call it learning walks.
It's a learning walk, participating in the learning walk. That's great.
Yeah, that was one of the things we wrote down that we do, but we can't do it at the.
At our.
Right, we can't do each other's classrooms, because we're all teaching at the same time.
Gotcha.
But we get a taste of it when we come back and talk about it.
Right.
Sure. And then the other question is, so say one of you went to a conference, would this be where you would share that experience?
Yep.
So the one thing I always wondered is if, as we sort of put money towards professional development, I was just wondering how that learning gets from the one individual who went to the conference and is disseminated, you know, across the school, so this would be the vehicle for that?
Yep.
I can think of one specific example to share. Liz tried a new technology using QR codes on a station activity she was doing in the class, and she did it first, and then she shared how it worked and the pros and cons with the PLC, and then they both tried it the next time around, so.
And then once a month vertically, they'll meet with the other grade level science teachers after school, and that's the kind of common threads that they can talk about, and Dr. Thomas kind of ties it all together for them, because she's working with them, kind of drawled them off, and then they can meet monthly and talk about things that they've been doing.
So you also have a, a meeting of all the science middle school teachers as well?
Yes. So instead of meeting across, we meet vertically, and we all get to talk about ideas, what works, what we can do differently, and so on.
Right, so that the, the curriculum is sort of scaffolded appropriately.
So we know what each other's doing.
Thank you.
And if they, if they ever did want to see each other, you know, certainly we would get coverage, you know, for 15, 20 minutes, if Mr. Setcand means that I really want to give Mr. Pierce his class at the beginning of the lesson, which I'm telling you publicly.
Yeah. Well, a lot of times we do use the, you know, common, learning commons and.
The project.
Project rooms and things like that, and three of us will bring the kids together for doing something really exciting, like a demonstration. Well, they think it's amazing to just sit down with three classes and all be together and see all three of us together, and then we'll like.
Teach together.
10 or 15 minutes demo, and then go back, so we kind of, you know, have that energy with the three of us, so we can do that, and they think that's really exciting, we do too. So I get to kind of see them in that moment too, which is nice.
That's great. Thank you.
Mr. Martin.
Thank you. One of the things that, that kind of excites me and really motivates me the most from a great PLC like, like, not I'm sure you guys have, but exists throughout the Galvin, is really, is really the capacity for when you're getting together, that you trust each other. That if you don't have that, I mean, it isn't a, it isn't an evaluative process, it had all those old notions of isolation and, and the individual, individualized craft sort of, sort of break down, fortunately, to talk about, you know, the consistency across, across the teams, across the grades, across the school, and that's a trust thing, and that's very big, and that's, you know, that's the biggest thing toward progress, is the, the staff working and trusting and feeling confidence in each other and feeling strength from that, and even, you know, whatever, you know, even the, even the ability for, you know, working, working together as a school community, if that, that trust factor isn't there, it impedes progress, so that's, that's really big, and that's what inspires me the most, so thank you very much for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just reiterate my thanks. We so often look at things on a macro level, kind of at the school committee, so to be able to zoom in and see something in action that we hear about so frequently, speaking personally makes it so much more just realistic and, and my own ability to comprehend it, it goes up that much more, so I'll just echo my thanks, definitely for being here tonight at 7:00 to do that for us, and obviously, of course, for doing it, for doing it, and doing it so well in Wakefield. Thank you.
We've been working with many of the other districts, like 10 other multi-force districts. And when we tell them we have this time, they are so jealous.
They are.
Because we're unraveling standards, we adopted them, we're probably one of the first grade levels.
We are.
In the state, sixth grade last year, we kind of enrolled them ahead of the game. And they, you know, we are appreciative to have the time in our schedule that allows us to meet professionally. It's, it's very, really been.
And it's quite an opportunity.
Great.
I'll maybe just reiterate that when the commissioner came and visited Wakefield, that was his number one takeaway, was he said they get, they have this built into their schedule, you know, pre-K to 12, like every week, I mean, I think he was even quite surprised and extremely impressed that that's happening in the Wakefield Public Schools, so. And I also want to just offer my thanks, this like incredibly dynamic group just made, made me very proud tonight, this practice, and this practice is happening all over Wakefield, and then the role of the teachers working together, supported by a coach, supported by a principal, and when that synergy happens, a lot really, at the end of the day, it impacts our students' learning in a meaningful way, and that's really the, the case, so thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have one more presentation for you tonight, some more guests, so could our technology council members come on up, or are we going to give an instructional technology report?
So we'd like to talk about our current iteration of our, upcoming iteration of our district technology strategy. Start by giving you a quick overview of how we created the plan, and I'll introduce everybody to see this, we're all members of the technology council together, so I'll, I'll tell you where everybody is and what part of the plan that they're going to talk about like five minutes in a minute. So what we wanted to do when we started this new version of the strategy is we wanted to develop an action-based strategy, similar to the district techno, instructional strategy, so we used that as kind of the model of how we wanted to create this. We started with a future protocol, basically talked about as if it were three years from now, you know, what technology looked like at Wakefield Public Schools and all of our successes and our challenges, even, you know, as if, as if we were in the future. Talked about the current state of technology, now how things actually are today, and then we had a bridging exercise where we all kind of talked about how do we get from the current state to that ideal future state. We broke everything out into action steps, and we, we came up with four areas of focus, student experience, teacher experience, community engagement, and management operations. We talked to stakeholders in all those areas, and we had a lot of conversations around the, the action items we came up with, and really kind of assigned those to those, we modified them as we needed to. So now we have the, we have our plan, we have the technology council members here representing different stakeholder groups to summarize various parts of the plan. We have our Wakefield High School students at the end, Carolyn Demasi and Mark Ciotti, are going to talk about student experience. We have a Galvin middle school teacher, Brianna Semenza, to talk about the teacher experience portion of it. Andy Bray, a community member and parent, to talk about community engagement, and then I'll wrap up with management operations, and we can open it up for questions. Carolyn, Mark, if you want to kick us off.
Thank you, Jeff. So for student experience, our first idea is to publish an etiquette for technology usage developed by students for students. Some examples would be like digital citizenship, a federated professional email. We want to encourage the creativity, critical thinking, communication, and collaboration all around the use of technology, and we want to allow students to personalize their own use of technology to engage in their learning, so if some students want to use high-tech, if some want to use tech but also stick to some lower-tech ways, they can do that.
We'd then also like to start developing a sort of digital portfolio, a way that students can then start creating projects or presentations that they can share with groups larger than just one person, such as a teacher. We'd also like to provide a unified curriculum amongst the different grades and the different districts that every student can rely on, such as iPass and Google Classroom, Pearson. And finally, we'd like to offer technical support for students by students. The tech integration team offers help to teachers right now during the school time. We'd like to offer that to students during their ASEs and their free times to give them help with anything from low-range problems to high-range, more tasking problems that they're facing with their devices or presentations.
So while teachers have been adapting to the new standards and the new curriculum, teachers and students both were, were very lucky to receive such wonderfully upgraded technology, and now that teachers have become more comfortable integrating technology into their lessons and into their daily life, we're now looking to collaborate with the library media specialists, the technology integration coaches, and through professional development to find more meaningful ways to support the curriculum using technology, because things like writing a paper on Google Docs or a Word document is not using the technology to its potential, it's just another use of writing, another form of writing. So in order to do this, we're also looking to develop a professional development series on digital learning that's flexible in scheduling and creates opportunities for observing other teachers in the district and with our surrounding districts that we work with, because we have the teachers that know exactly what they want to do here and know how to implement it and integrate it into the curriculum. So we'd like to cargo it sometime so that we can do those PLCs around technology and integrating technology into our lessons, as, you know, we have done a little bit in the past as well. A great addition to this would also be creating a digital sharing system for teachers so that we are able to upload projects that we've done in our class, resources that we've used, so that others can implement these projects with their classes or tailor them to the subject area that they're working with. And as well, students are now coming up with different abilities, and teachers are not always aware of, okay, so last year they worked on this, or they know how to do research on the computers. So a creation of expectations for each grade level around technology would ensure meaningful implementation of what we're doing. So we're definitely looking forward to collaborating and learning meaningful ways to incorporate this great technology that we are so lucky to have.
And I get to talk to you about community engagement. You know, Wakefield's really made significant investments in educational technology in the past years, and the district's really taken gigantic leaps forward in its use of technology, but what we recognize there's a deficit of, is really sharing that out, talking to the community about what that looks like, how is it benefiting teaching and learning, how is it expanding, enhancing, and really reimagining teaching and learning through the use of instructional technology. So that's really what this section of the strategy focuses on, and there's four components to it, and I'll hit, try to hit on each of them a little bit. Technology in action, that's really, what does that look like? You know, I get this question pretty regularly, what do we mean when we say we're using technology to enhance and expand and enrich teaching and learning? And so we're, we're talking about different models for how to share that out. We currently have a showcase, there's some sessions at Parent University, but can we have, you know, a teacher, I'm sorry, what's it called, the, the teacher walkthrough or?
The learning walk.
The learning walk. Can we video capture a learning walk and share that with parents? You know, can we do other? You know, can we do other innovative things to, to show people what, what the use of technology looks like day-to-day in the classroom? And how is it, how is it enhancing students' experience? We also recognize, you know, that we, you know, that, that the district as a whole has really come up a lot in its use of technology. And what can we do to, to share some of that back? So we're, we're thinking of ideas of having like community support sessions for, you know, be it at the senior center where we could have like a tech help desk session where they could come down and bring their questions, and it could be anything. You know, we, we imagine it will be everything, you know, from how do you reboot this thing to, to how do I actually, how do I use email? But just, you know, it's showing that, it's giving something back to the community for that investment. We're able to help, help, you know, seniors and other community members with their use of technology by, by leveraging our, our student help desk and, and other resources that we have. So that's a little bit about technology in action. Communication, though, is such a big piece. We, we've been saying for some time, we could do more to tell this story. There's a lot of great stories to be told about how technology's being used in the classroom. And how can we leverage our existing channels, be it, you know, the district's PTO page, Twitter feeds? How can we leverage those channels to push the story out? How can we amplify the story by, by sharing it out to other channels? Like all of the, all of the PTOs have their own Facebook groups and, and using those existing channels to help push things out. So really, just more about communicating and getting these stories out there, capturing them for one thing, and then sharing them out is the other piece of it. You know, I mentioned, you know, the notion of giving something back. There's also this component around making sure that all the students have access to the use of technology outside of the school. We, we currently have a great program to make sure that everyone has access to a device, but since all of the learning is virtual and all of their, all the resources are in the cloud, we really need to take the next step and provide a social safety net for those that don't have access to the internet at home. And what might that look like and explore options for that. And then lastly, under this section of the plan, we want to start to, down the road, we want to start to try to engage some of our community, our business community in town and, and think with them creatively about how we might collaborate on, on educational opportunities around the use of, of technology. So there's, we have a lot of ideas, you know, floating around that we want to try to put something on in the, in the following year under this strategy.
And the final section, our management operations section, we've, you know, we've done a great job. We've been able to do a lot of things in the, in the area of management operations already in the last three years with our current strategy that we're kind of working to the end of. But we want to continue to, to make sure we're defining our technology staff roles to meet the needs of the district as appropriate, with a focus on equity between all the schools. We want to make sure we're maintaining that ongoing technology investment. We're really trying to continuously adjust our five-year hardware plan to make sure that we're meeting the current year's needs, and that sometimes takes moving something back and forth to, you know, because we want to continue to maintain that purchase of technology through our local budget. And we've been able to do that, and, and we're, you know, we've been successful with that, we're happy with that. And then fully integrating applications and online services to streamline district operations is, is really about, you know, you start using things like conferencing and, and things like Teach Point for evaluations, information, curriculum planning online and things like that. You want to make sure everybody's using the same tools for that for consistency, so you're not all over the place when you're trying to plan ahead. And so that's really what we're looking at for, for our four areas of focus. And so is there any further questions?
On your last section, you have a specific line item to continue to increase technology hardware allocation.
Yes.
At what point, if, like, if a staff member leaves or a student graduates, do you, like, are we running into space issues leaving those accounts open?
No, I mean, we, we definitely, when somebody graduates, we keep the account, we disable the accounts for a period of time before, and then we eventually delete those accounts. I mean, none of the staff member, the same thing.
I know students who graduated two, three years ago whose account is still active.
So this is something we reviewed this year, you're absolutely right. This is something we reviewed this, probably like, I think, two, a couple of months ago, we talked about this. And, and we did, we found the same thing. So we set up a plan to start deactivating them, and then we'll keep them open for, we'll keep them alive for maybe like a couple of months after graduation. We want kids to be able to get their work back. If they, they forget to take it out with them, we want to make sure they still have access to it so they don't lose all the work that they've, that they've done over the years. So, we definitely have a period of time. I think it's now they graduate, and then we keep it open, we keep, we disable the account, keep it alive for like three months, and then we delete those accounts eventually.
And then those accounts that are still open that perhaps have slipped through the cracks, do you notify them, hey, we caught you, we're going to close you, or?
We do, we do try to let people know, yeah. I mean, we know some people were using those ones you're referring to, they were using them in their colleges, so when we were going to disable those, we obviously want to let people know first. We don't want to just come to Austin. And they would come back and say, well, I need like a week to get the rest of my things out. And we give them that time. I mean, they're, they're still our students, even though they graduated.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking of space.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, your service room's so big.
Yeah. And a lot of their documents and things are in Google now too, so they know that space isn't as much of an issue for the district locally, but, but we still have to maintain and manage our accounts and keep our sets of things clean. I mean, it's important.
And where in the whole technology world are we teaching our students that just because they read it on the internet, it's not necessarily true?
I think that comes in our, in our library curriculum. And when they start teaching research to, to the kids, they, they do talk about sources and that's a, that's a, you know, it's that first thing, the first thing a kid does is Google something to find out if it's true. And, but I know that's been a big part of our library media curriculum, where they've been teaching that.
And I also think that's a responsibility for everyone, the stand age. I was just lecturing a bunch of eight-year-olds on the way back from soccer about always question your sources. So I think information literacy is, you know, is such a big issue for all of us to, to keep touting.
Mr. Leanos.
Thank you. Thank you for filling us in on this thorough, very thorough plan. My question was, I guess, directed maybe at Brianna and the students. One of the, the broad goals of technology is to keep allowing teachers to individualize instruction, so that, so making the time in a way and the, that you spend with your students more efficient, so you're able to spend more individual time, you know, in the classroom, meeting those individual student needs. So if you look back like three years ago and how much progress you've made, what can you tell us about what lessons you've learned and how far we've come and how, how, what we'd like to do in this next phase in that area?
So I find that having the use of the technology is giving more of my students with individual needs a chance to have visuals, more visuals, that I can just throw up in a second on the board, and I don't have to dig through anything. Because when I first started, I was using an overhead projector. And then I'd have to, you know, get everything together, make sure that it's all ready. And now I can say, okay, I want to pull up a map. It takes thirty seconds to pull up a map. I can have everything right there. You know, every day I do a turn and talk for my students, for those students that, you know, they don't always like to participate in a whole group discussion, so we do a small turn and talk, everyone talk to your partner. I can have up there every day the words of the, you know, the rules of the turn and talk with visuals with words, and the questions are also up there. So it's taking less time for me to walk over for every student to say, hey, you need to look up at the board, and you need to look at, this, these are the rules for the turn and talk. I can address it as a whole. So it's taking less time for us to do that. It's also, you know, there are a lot of students who are visual learners, and where they have Chromebooks in front of them, I might say, okay, so this is how we're going to look this up. And it might be much easier, especially where they're so used to it, for them to look something up there opposed to in print type of textbooks.
And how about for you guys, can you think of some examples where technology has really helped you sort of really individualize, you know, get something in a way that you might not have otherwise?
Absolutely. Back three years ago, if you wanted to study for a huge final project that you have at the end of the year, you would take out the five-pound book that a teacher gave you, and you would dig through the chapters to find that one line in that one page that is somewhere between chapter eighteen and twenty-three. Well, now I have all my books online, and I have all my slide shows online. I now have all the slide shows that we've gone through. I can go through and say, I remember it was after this section, I remember it was after this. Specifically, I'm in a AP Statistics course where I needed to pull some different methods on how to do different tests, and it took me no time at all to find those tests online. While if I tried to find it through the book, it might have taken me one to two hours just to dig through all the different examples that they use.
Yeah, great example. Thank you.
And then I think, do you guys, I mean, there, I think there's so many more opportunities for projects. Whereas it's not just writing a paper. So I think for those students that cannot, you know, handle writing a five-page paper, there are other ways that they can show what they've learned. And then again, with study habits, there are so many different things that are out there that they have more access to than just flashcards that you have to write out yourself.
That's that digital portfolio idea.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Students are getting more creative with how they present information.
Yeah.
A couple of years ago, a few years ago, social media was something that was so banned that if you were seen using it, you could be punished. While quite recently, I did an English project where we made a Snapchat story of a book, where that was an acceptable project. It was able to be seen, it was able to be viewed, it was able to be graded, and it was something that we enjoyed doing, because we knew how to do it and we knew how to do it well. And without that technology being there, that presentation might not have happened. We may not have had these same opportunities or the same grades that we got.
There's actually an English class that they use Twitter, so like when they're reading a book as a class, they'll tweet about it to like share with the rest of the world and their peers about it. It's a really unique way.
How much of the focus is, is looking for open source material so that you're able to just provide even more access to information without having to purchase stuff? Is that...
I think that's one of the things that we're looking forward to working on, because I think there's a lot out there, but teachers don't know where to go to find it or how to find it. And I may find something that was easy for me to find, and it's free, but another teacher might go out and purchase it because she, he or she doesn't know that I've already found something. So for, to be able to, I, for me, I mean, I know teachers that stay up all night and look for things and plan and try to incorporate these things to make a great project. And then I know other people that they can find it in five minutes and that's it. So if, if we had the time or the space to share out what we have, I think it would definitely help other teachers. You know, being able to collaborate with a library media specialist or having that technology integration coach to come in and say, look, this is how you can adapt this and use it in social studies or in math. I know a lot of the math teachers, they have the online Pearson part of it, but what else can they do with technology in order to, to have the students working with math, with numbers on the computer?
Is, now who would be, I mean, that's really time-consuming. So where would that, whose purview would, would that fall under? Do you know?
I would say some of that, some of that, you know, we would do in the technology department, try to work with teachers. Some of it could come from library media specialists.
Okay.
Come from, from PLCs, might come from conferences that somebody goes to and shares. You know, we're also talking about coming up with some kind of digital sharing space. But we don't want to do that without having presented that material to someone first. If you just put everything in a sharing space, no one knows to look for it there.
Right.
So I think those, those, you know, team meetings, the PLCs, the, the one-to-one work, I think, you know, through all of that, I think you find the best tool for the, kind of the best experience. And you, you know, you have to try different tools as well to know, you know, you might find a free tool that doesn't work as well as this pay tool. Does it do the job, or doesn't it do the job? Then you have to decide, you know, is it worth paying the money for or not?
Right, right.
I think, you know, there's various ways we can get to that and, you know, find the right tool. I think that's the key, is finding the right tool.
And I do think the, the coaching from the library media specialists is invaluable in the sense because they've, you know, amongst their peers, they're sharing what's, you know, the best of the best, and they, they can help teachers really cut to the chase in, in finding stuff, you know, like, like we've been talking about.
Good. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
Could you talk a little bit about how this strategy was developed?
Sure, yeah. It was, so the technology council started it. We took the, we took the, the current plan, kind of picked through that. We found our successes, we found our challenges in that plan. I think we used those as kind of the base for this one, because you don't just want to forget about the things that you haven't accomplished yet. So I think we started there. We had meetings with the technology council, many, over several sessions, different people were in attendance, so we got, you know, we got that, the technology council has parents on it, it has community members on it, it has teachers on it, it has students. So there's a technology staff, library media specialists, you know, administrators. So we kind of get everybody, everybody's kind of initial input. And as I said before, we, you know, we kind of drafted, we did those protocols, we kind of drafted that, that future state, the current state, and the kind of bridging state. Took that to, to our technology integration class at the high school, where the students kind of comment on everything and look at it, and talked about that. We brought it to, to teacher groups at all the schools, you know, kind of visited some, some staff meetings at the different elementary schools, middle school, high school, all of them. Tech staff looked at it, we had administrators at buildings look at it consistently as we developed it and as we changed things. So I think it was a well-thought-out process, it included a lot of people, it included everybody, pretty much all of our stakeholders that we could think of. And that's, and then we developed this from that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and I'd just add that, I mean, the previous version of this plan, I, I think, was more of a kind of a visioning document and a communication piece about, you know, taking stock of where we were and where we wanted to be heading. I feel like this version of the plan is, is much more action-oriented and much more detailed in terms of the what and how we're going to get there. So I think it's, it's, it was a natural kind of evolution from, from where we were, I don't know how many years ago, three years ago?
Three years.
Three years ago? You know, where it helps to operationalize a lot of the things we want to try to accomplish now.
So I noticed, Mr. Brian, the slide you presented, one of the items was about students' access to technology and internet at home. So have you found that that's an issue that we're facing?
Well, one of the things we're going to talk about in developing the plan is there's some rich data, because we have some surveys, both on the teacher side and the student side, that's informed what, what's in here. And one of the things we heard is that two percent of the students don't have access at home. It's not a big number, but it's significant for their individual learning experience.
Definitely.
So how can we, how can we help with that?
Great, thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
Thank you. One of the things that I, I enjoy this presentation the most is to see the role of the technology council, how it's evolved in the last, call it five years or so, that, you know, you know, very much, five, six years ago, it was very much a conversation around what we don't have, what we need, what we'd like to buy, what, what, what can be satisfied, what goals can be met. Now, now it's nice to see conversations and brainstorming sessions around, you know, what can we do? What can we do with this? What can we do that we didn't even think of before? And it's not just meeting the basic fundamental needs of communicating and learning and computing, but, but the, but expand that. One of the things that I, I find most interesting on all of this presentation are the community engagement pieces, because I think that sort of as you've, as you've, you know, mentioned, but the ability to share with the community at large, the types of learning experiences, the types of technology and how that's a real part of today's culture, never mind a school environment, is a hu, is a huge part of having the community understand the investment that we've asked them to make, and that, that this investment is, is really meaningful and it's, and it's, and it's well-purposed. I, I just, I was at the tech council meeting when we were talking about that, and I just remember the example that you gave on the, on the senior center, and how, and how useful that can be, and how almost inspiring to have a group of students and, and teachers work with some, some senior citizens and, and go into the McCarthy Center and, and helping them understand what technology is and how it can be useful in, in their life. I mean, the very simple thing about the example was using email. And those are things that are in many ways lost on, you know, lots of senior citizens today. But the ability to make that, to make that connection is, is a big part of the learning, a big part of learning, and a new part of learning. I also think there's great value to having sort of us, students, teachers go there as opposed to having them come to the schools. One, is because they'll be learning on, on devices that they'll actually be using. They can't, they won't want to bring them into the state-of-the-art sort of technology world at Wakefield High or Galvin, because they'll probably never use that device again. But by going to the center and, and using what they have there, that's something they could use every day. So there's real meaning, there's real depth there. So that, that's actually quite inspiring, as the next level of what this is. that, that's actually quite inspiring as the next level of what this is. And also the, the role that the tech council plays in helping guide our thinking in the next round of, of funding. That, you know, we've, we've really, we've really made some strong commitments budget-wise and, and we have, again, the fiscal 18 budget. Lots of your work really go into building the, the foundation for that. Not only for the school committee, but I'm sure for the administration as well. So lots of nights, I would, you know, when you were answering Ms. Morgan's question, lots and lots of nights around, around the brainstorming. But thank you all and obviously the members of the council that aren't here. But this is some, this is pretty, pretty, pretty good stuff as it evolves. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great. Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And just as a last announcement on, on my other section of the agenda, in regard to personalized learning, which some questions were about that, from a leadership perspective, myself, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Metropolis, Mr. Tom Tony, and so totally, we'll be attending a personalized learning workshop from the leadership perspective on June 12th. So we're really looking forward to that. So we can, it's really about leading that work in, in the district. So we're looking forward to that. That's it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Peffling, budget items.
So we have a few gifts this evening and a approval for a sign. So the first, I'll start with the gifts and this is a carryover, the first one's a carryover from our meeting earlier this month in Boston. It's a gift from Keith Tree Service for $1,000 for Scoreboard Advertising over five years. The board had asked earlier that we get a better understanding of how the sponsorship is working. It is $1,000 a year for five years. And the first year will be next year, fiscal year 18. So they've made their, their sponsorship payment for next year within this time period now, within fiscal year 17. So.
Is there a motion to approve this gift?
There is. Move the school committee accept with gratitude donation of $1,000 from Keith's Tree Service funds for school board advertising banners, a five-year commitment.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Any questions, discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously.
The next gift is $2,500 from the Friends of Wakefield Memorial High School Soccer Booster Club, softball booster club. And the funds are for the assistant varsity girls' coach for the '16-'17 season.
Mr. I have a motion, but I'd like to ask a question prior to making the motion, if I may.
Sure, please.
So this, this reads, and this is maybe, maybe spot on, right, but it reads the Friends of Wakefield High School Softball Booster Club. So this isn't the Booster Club, this is the Friends of the Booster Club. Am I reading too much into that? I very well might be. So there's the Booster Club, then there's the Friends of the Booster Club? Is it the Friends of the Friends?
I'm gonna make the assumption that it's one of the same, but this, the check, the name on the check is Friends of WHS. We should move that to W, MHS, but softball, correct. That's, that's what the check came out from.
So it's the Friends of, of Wakefield High School Softball?
Yes.
Okay. It doesn't, I didn't, I guess my inquiry was how many organizations are around there. We'll take the money.
I think it's just the one.
I'm gonna give up on gifts.
Thank you.
Just do it, Mike.
Move the school committee accept with gratitude donation of $2,500 from the Friends of WHS Softball Booster Club. The funds are for the assistant girls' varsity coach for assisting during the 2016-'17 season.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Questions, discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously.
The third gift this evening is from the Woodville PTO. It is for $3,400 to assist funding with the Woodville Elementary School Library.
Move the school committee accept with gratitude or donation of $3,400 from the Woodville School PTO. The funds are for the Woodville School Library.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Discussion, questions? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
I, I also wanted to recognize many local businesses who supported our Educator Appreciation Week that we had last week. The central office staff, the ladies in the central office, I should say, were, did a spectacular job putting together five baskets, one for each day of the week. And they were a food basket, a gardening basket, a car wash slash detailing basket, a hardware basket and a sports basket, I think, were the, were the, the baskets. But in your packet, there's a list of vendors or a list of local commercial businesses that supported our education appreciation week. And if I could indulge, just read their names quickly if that would be.
Please.
Okay. House of Pizza, North Ave Diner, Maya, Sweet Bay, Gregory's, Massimos, Perfect Detail, Depot Automotive, Sunny Nodos, Ironwood Banning Cages, Hart's Hardware, Wakefield Bulladrome, King Rail Reserve Golf, Cravings, Stone and Theater, Bellino's, Dockside, Turner's, Simon Eyes, Sparkling Image, Gem Auto Parts and Play It Again Sports.
And a special thank you to Honeydew Donuts, who donated free coffee to all Wakefield High School's employees on the Wednesday of that week as well.
Thanks. Thank you to those businesses. Okay. And now, Mike, we have one more motion with respect to the sign for the Greenwood, right?
Correct. The Greenwood PTO has proposed through the Greenwood Principal, Ms. Calora, putting a new sign in front of the Greenwood School. There will be a, a future gift coming, a gift donation, motion coming, but this is actually for the approval of this design. If it's approved at the school committee level, it would then go to Board of Selectment for their approval because it is on school grounds. And then the donation would come back to us as a, once they have the, everything priced out and purchased, it would come back to the board again, the school committee again, for the donation. So in your packet, emailed out yesterday was the design that was selected between the PTO and the Greenwood staff. And I will answer any questions I can on this, so.
So we'll start with a motion. Is there a motion to approve the sign?
Move the school committee approve the design layout of the Greenwood School sign as presented. Second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Discussion or questions?
This is, from the looks of this, is a fairly sizable sign. So it's like four feet by three and a half feet. Where, is there a determination exactly where they wanna put it?
So it's going to be in the main street side of the school. However, we do need to work with DPW to identify the best, the optimal place to place it. You know, we do need to be cautious of dig safe and other, other concerns there. But I believe it'd be on, it's definitely gonna be on the front side of the school, on the main street side. And I can't exactly explain what position it would be in at this time.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Markham.
I, I just wanted to, just to mention all the work that went into it from the, the PTO. They had really done, they've been talking about this for, for some time and it's really nice to see them come together. It's an impressive-looking sign.
Yes, nice.
And certainly a shout-out to, to Baton Brothers that, that are really, at this point, are volunteering the, the design piece. And it's, it's nice that Greenwood Business is helping Greenwood School too. So I think it's a very nice design.
And it might also, not to be overlooked, it's a gift from the class of 2017. So this year's fourth graders who are moving on to the Galvin next year. So.
Okay. So a motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Okay. And that's all for you right now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Subcommittee reports. Mr. Markham.
Well, thank you. We had a finance subcommittee meeting. We could go Friday. We had a pretty thorough report from Mike on the pending, uh, close down of fiscal year 17. Mike had shared with us some areas of concern. We addressed some of those, or he addressed some of those, and, and reports that we're going to be in, in pretty good stead to close down fiscal 17. The other thing that we're pleased to be able to see and report that we are not going to need to approach the town for use or access to the Special Education Fund, which is certainly, some kudos to Superintendent Mike and the special ed department for managing the best they can. Sometimes those things aren't entirely in their control, but to the extent that they are, it's certainly, certainly very helpful. We got some reports on Walton and the Wakefield High School site studies. And so we'll be obviously paying attention to that. And at the next stage, when that comes to be, obviously more, more will be reported to the full committee. We did spend probably most of the meeting discussing the next round of fees for the tuition at the Doyle, fees for the bus, and then what the athletic performing arts and club fees would look like with the infusion of, of the, of, 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 I suppose, some, some subsidy from the school budget to reduce those fees. So we had, we had some good conversation around that. And we're not done with that conversation. That will continue at the next finance and subcommittee meeting. So, and then we'll have a, a report back to the full school committee for a final end-of-year vote on, on recommended fees and, and the structure of that.
Thank you. Labor and personnel is not met. Policy and planning, Ms. Morgan.
We, not that either.
We do have one scheduled, you know.
Future dates and agenda items. The next school committee meeting will be June 13th. School committee comments. Mr. Callen.
Just realizing that this is our last meeting before graduation. So I would like to wish the graduates a, a great senior week and, and graduation day. I will be pedaling my bicycle on that morning, so I won't be there. But hopefully everything goes very smoothly.
Ms. Leakos.
I wanted to mention that I attended the Wakefield Cultural Council reception last week at the Ace Building, the Albion Exchange Arts Building. And on display was the work of Wakefield High School's Advanced Placement of Visual Arts students. And the work was exceptional. Incredible, incredible talent and dedication from the students, which of course is a reflection of real quality teaching. Also wanted to congratulate the High School Theater Arts Program, which received a $1,500 grant from the Wakefield Cultural Council. The Cultural Council is, of course, my employer, but I have nothing to do with these grants for the record. But, but they're very competitive and, and the grants really do help foster arts education in the schools. And it was a nice event. Representatives Broder and Wong came and Town Administrator Steve Mayo was there as well. So wanted to congratulate all the grantees.
Thank you. Ms. Ford.
I, I too actually attended the Advanced Placement Art Show and it was really impressive, really powerful. And the students were there, they described their work and it was really eye-opening. It was great. A lot of interesting themes, interesting themes, a lot of them. I also just wanted to let the committee know, I went to school committee school on Saturday. So I know everything. So we're good to go now.
Mr. Markham.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow, with Mr. Callen, wishing all the members of the class of 2017, that we get the best. Thank you for, for your years, Wakefield Public Schools, and best of luck with everything.
Mr. Massey.
Yeah, congratulations to the seniors. Graduation coming up. Have a great time at Senior Week and best of luck on whatever avenue you decide to take after graduation.
Ms. Morgan.
I'm also, thank you.
And I'll also just say, congratulations to our graduates, for sure. And enjoy the summer, too. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
There is. Move the school committee adjourn its meeting of May 23, 2017.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Thank you.